Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Present.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Present.
Councilmember Elrich. Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
All right, and we have a quorum of the council present. Are there any council announcements or comments? Joy? And then Colleen?
I wanted to just bring the council's attention to one item that has now been scheduled for April 24th, and that's the Hefner Community Center rental policies. What I wanted to make sure of is that no groups who are using the facilities on a weekly basis would be charged until after that time. I think we have, I believe it's the Tacoma Park Band using Hefner on a weekly basis, and they were notified that they would be charged after April 3rd. So if that implementation could be delayed until the council has had a chance to weigh in on April 24th, I would appreciate that. Also, on the community center use, I anticipated that the council would be discussing the alcohol use policy. We've had several requests from the arts group, and now the rec committee has had a chance to discuss it. And I believe that the council should review the issue of whether alcohol can be served in certain circumstances in the community center. And if it's possible, if staff can respond to that request by the 24th, I'd appreciate if it was combined on that item.
Okay, anything else?
Well, I want to thank the Public Works Department for the work that they've done recently on Elm Avenue and Jackson Avenue, and for being so responsive to our Ward II constituent needs. That has been great, and it's very appreciative. I get lots of comments on the streets now people stop to tell me how thankful they are. Pass that along. I also want to root on my old home basketball team, UCLA, and my new home basketball team, the Maryland Women's Basketball Team.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I would like to thank our police department for the recent investigations and arrests for drug activity in the city. And I look forward to more of the same. Appreciate it. I also would like to second Joy's suggestion that we not charge the Tacoma Park Community Band for the use of Hefner Park until the council does have a chance to revisit that. I would also hope that we could not charge the Ritchie Citizens Association for the April session again until we get a chance to revisit that question as a council.
Anything else? All right. We'll go on to public comments. This is the time set aside in the council meeting for comments on everything but our special session item. If you wanted to talk about the Arbor Day resolution, we prefer that you wait until that item comes up. For everything else, this would be the appropriate time. I would ask when you come to the podium that you identify yourself and keep your remarks to three minutes. We've got a timer on the podium to help you tell when your three minutes are up.
My name is Mr. Pat Lovelace. 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. And one thing I'd like to say is we've got a really good election year coming up. We've got Joy Austin Lane running for county council. We've got Jamie Raskin running for state senate. They're both wonderful people. And I'd like to also point out that we need to get citizens registered to vote. Because we're not going to get anyone in there if we don't vote for them. You know, and it'd be nice if they could have some kind of a voter education, you know, like when people are in high school or something like that, they should have a... It's part of graduation. Wouldn't it be nice if they could have registration to vote? You know, it's part of the graduation process, part of, you know, coming from a child to an adult. If they could have like a voter registration drive into high schools, the school kids get together and they all could just say, hey, let's register to vote. We're adults now. And another thing too is as far as alcohol in the community centers, I think that would be setting a very bad example to a lot of people. Because, you know, I myself, you know, haven't drank in 10 years. I've been sober for 10 years. And I think it'd be a very bad example to set for the community, very bad precedent to allow alcohol in any of our community centers or any of our community parks or anything. Because we're trying to promote sobriety and safety in a drug-free Tacoma Park, and I don't think it would be helpful if we allow drugs or alcohol. Alcohol is a drug, by the way. It is a central nervous system depressant. It is a drug. So we should not allow that in our community centers or parks or anything. We should uphold the standard that we preach. And I'd like to see that done. Thank you very much. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you.
David Bates, I live on Philadelphia Avenue. I'm here because I hope you all got copies of the responses to my questions that I submitted to the city regarding police services. I want to first thank Barb Matthews for getting me those answers. I'm sure it's not pleasant to try and track down all the information, but I appreciate the answers coming through. Of the answers I received, some of them were non-responsive, some of them were very good, and a few of them were troubling to me, and I wanted to express that concern right now. The answers, and I hope you will look at them carefully, suggested that of the various issues that we're facing with our police, we have got a very significant, and I'm sure you know this, significant and long-term staffing shortage, and that really is a concern. There are certain things that are mentioned in the response to my questions that are not being done because of it. There are certain things that were mentioned in response to my letter that are affecting the amount of money we pay in overtime, and I'm sure it's affecting the ability of our individual police officers who are already working 12 hours a day to do their job properly. I am concerned when I see that we have anywhere from a 15% to a 17% shortage chronic since 2000. That is too long, too much. I think that this is a serious management issue. I would urge the city manager to look into that. Perhaps look at the way these positions are supposed to be filled, why they're not being filled. And no excuses. We have excuses. We need this to be completed. We need this job done. I would urge the city council to offer some guidance and perhaps some oversight to the city manager to get our police force up to full staff. Again, I urge you, read this, and I would urge you to start asking your own questions about the way our police department is being managed or run. I think that we can do better. And I have other questions. I'd like maybe just to follow up after sometime. I don't know if in person or by letter, whatever's better, but maybe I'll give you a call phone call. That's it. Thank you. Please do something about our police staffing.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Sharp. I live on Glazewood Court. I'm on the board of directors of the Silver Spring Tacoma Thunderbolts. You should each have in front of you our 2005 program, the 2006 season, which as I count is actually our seventh season. It's hard to believe we've been doing this long starts in June. In the past, I think the last three years, Tacoma Park City Government and the Thunderbolts have had some type of not completely defined partnership. And I was asked the question recently, well, what is the nature of the partnership? And I went back into the records of the council, which is wonderful to be able to do that online now. And couldn't really find anything. I talked to Jessie about it to see if she had some super-secret way of finding out things that I didn't know about. But no, it is out there all online. And there was, the council has always endorsed the partnership, but there was never anything formalized on that. It was handled through the staff. That's fine, but I'm back here to re-request that that be done again because there wasn't anything that I could really point to when I was asked the question. So to emphasize to those of you who are new, the partnership entails free things. That is, we're not asking for money. We want to have access to certain types of things that will help our publicity. For example, a newsletter, maybe getting a link on the webpage, maybe being able, if we can ever get around to it, putting banners someplace on city property, something of that sort. Opening day is Saturday, Saturday, June 10th against the Bethesda Vic Train at Blair High School. We actually play our first game on June 9th, but first home game is on June 10th. The All-Star Game this year is July 17th at Povich Field. And the playoffs will be July 31st through August 3rd. Some of the games will be at Blair, some of the games will be at Povich. One of the games will be at College Park. Last year, the Thunderbolts were the co-champions. The first year, the Cal Ripken Senior Collegiate Baseball. They here is the first-year program from the Ripken League, and it's available on the Ripken League website. The best way to get to the Ripken League website is to go to the Thunderbolts website because it's faster to type in tbolz.org and then link to that than it is to figure out what the Ripken, is Ripken College Baseball. And that's much longer to type. So go to the Thunderbolts website. You can see some nifty things there, and then there's a click right to the Ripken League website. Thanks a lot.
Could we check and see if we need to do anything on an ongoing basis to maintain our relationship with the Thunderbolts? I don't know if we need to do something formal or not.
As the council may recall, I think one of the goals that the recreation director has is to formalize those arrangements with organizations such as the Thunderbolts so it's very clear to anyone in the community who may want to know why they may have access to a newsletter, what the standard is, and to make sure that partnership is mutually beneficial. So I do know that that's something that Hayden is working on.
Okay, all right.
Hi, my name is Mark Castle. I'm an attorney who represent landlords in Tacoma Park. And I'm again trying to get my three minutes in to address the council on affordable housing issues which are on the agenda for later this evening. I want to emphasize, when I started with last week, that this is really all about affordable housing. And I think that although the council is supposed to be discussing public comments and staff recommendations and making, giving direction to the staff over the course of the month of April, you really, if you don't already know the issues, to some of the, answer to some of the following questions, I think you're premature. Questions like, how many of the rental households in Tacoma Park have incomes below $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, or even $50,000 a year? How many of those households spend more than, let's say, 25% or 30% or 40% of the household income on rent? If you're looking at an affordable housing program, you really need to know what it is you're trying to achieve and who it is you're trying to help. One way to look at affordable housing is to say, we want Tacoma Park to provide affordable housing to anyone who wants to come and get it. And then the next question would be, how many units of affordable housing should there be in Tacoma Park? Another way to look at it is that we want to provide affordable housing for the residents of Tacoma Park. It's a different question. And the council ought to know which question they're trying to answer when they put together a program. It's not enough to eliminate rent control or to relax it. It is one of the most restrictive in the country. You'd really need to know what it is you're trying to specifically accomplish. Without that, you're just fumbling around. I was looking at census data earlier this afternoon for Tacoma Park. It's available by zip code, so you know you're getting Tacoma Park. And at that point, for 1995 through March 2000, of the 13,000 people living in rental units in the city, almost 10,000 had moved in in the last five years. That surprised me. I thought Tacoma Park was a bit more stable, and I don't know if it's changed since then. But, you know, prices have jumped since 2000. The pressure is huge. According to Linda Walker, who I got a message from today, there are 485 units that have either already converted or in the process of converting to condos since 2000. And we know that's going to accelerate. Tacoma Park has to address the ability of landlords to make enough money to not want to convert to condo, or they're not going to have much left. And I will tell you, because I've spoken to a lot of landlords, there are a number of landlords, to my surprise, who would rather have a decent income stream and a profit from rental housing than to end up with a huge bank account from converting to condo. If you talk to them, you'll learn more about that. And I'm just about out of time, but if anybody wants to ask me about why no one applies for hardship petition, I've got answers for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Burner from Flower Avenue. Just a quick point in response to the previous gentleman's comments. The zip code 20912 is not directly mappable to Tacoma Park. There are portions of 20912 that are outside Tacoma Park, and there are little pieces of surrounding zip codes that are in Tacoma Park. So we would want to use any census information by zip code with caution.
My name is Marty Itner, and I live on Flower Avenue in Tacoma Park. I'm steward of Section 2 of Sligo Creek, which runs from Maple to New Hampshire Avenue. I'm here on behalf of Sligo Creek, which feeds into the Anacostia River and the Chesapeake Bay. While Sligo Creek Park is managed by Montgomery County Parks and Planning, it's waters by the state, I believe it is the duty of Tacoma Park to share in the environmental stewardship of both. I'm holding a report issued on March 13th by the Maryland Department of the Environment, which documents consistent violations by Columbia Union College over a period of four years specifically in regards to their swimming pool and power plant drains that connect directly to Sligo Creek. Here are some examples. July 2002, a white discharge of several gallons per minute was found originating from the power plant. March 2004, discharge of cleaning fluid from CUC air conditioning coils. January 2006, white liquid discharged into the creek that was traced back to CUC Power Plant. In December of 2005, MDE reported that all of the floor drains within the power plant remained connected to the storm drain system, including six in the chiller room and 14 in the boiler room. On January 6th, I contacted Tacoma Park Public Works, and my insistence Tacoma Park staff finally met with CUC on March 14th. It was a meeting I had hoped to attend, but told by the city that my presence would be counterproductive. After this meeting, I heard back from the city staff about the college's general good intentions. What I did not hear was anything about concrete actions or deadlines, nor had the city made an attempt to better understand the complicated outdated underground drain configuration. I felt that this meeting produced nothing of substance. Recently, I had some good conversations with CUC President Randall Risby. I believe that his intentions are good. But I don't believe the college has taken full responsibility nor provided full explanations for the past four years. And I wonder why the college is appealing the ruling if they really intend to fix the problem. I'm here to ask the city of Tacoma Park to take a proactive role in our water quality through periodic inspections and monitoring, by gaining a clear understanding of the drain configuration and working with CUC in the state to arrive at a timely solution, by transferring water quality enforcement from the state to the county, by showing up at the creek and becoming familiar with this in other problem areas, by maintaining better communication with the county, state, and citizens, and most of all, by putting the welfare of Sligo Creek on the city's agenda. Thank you.
I wonder if this is something that the city manager could get back to us. I know some of that has already been answered, but I think not all of it.
Sure. I'd be happy to relay your comments, Ms. Braithwaite. And perhaps the council may wish to schedule this for a work session at some point. As I had indicated last week, I think the city staff does share the concern about the ability of the state to respond in a timely fashion. The city attorney's office is already working on the necessary legislation for the council's consideration to transfer that enforcement authority from the state to the county. But as I indicated, the council may want to have some more in-depth discussion about this issue with Ms. Braithwaite at some point in the near future.
That sounds like a good idea.
I would find it helpful if, I know this came to the council before the council a number of months ago, and it would be helpful to me if I could have a copy of the minutes where this issue first came to the council. Thank you.
I wanted to say something about the census data. I actually have run most of the census data that's available for the city of Tacoma Park. I have a big booklet of all the printouts along with the maps that are available. And you can go to www.sensus.gov, and it'll give you a list of everything that's available by the different data sets. A lot of data is available by city place, not by zip code. And if you want specific areas by ward, you have to break it down by census block groups. And even doing that, I haven't been able to answer some of the questions I think we'd like to have answered related to the rent control. Who's the beneficial, who's benefiting most and those sorts of questions? Because the data just isn't available in that kind of a breakout.
All right. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say in response to Marty that I very much appreciate your advocacy on this issue. I think Sligo Creek is important to all of us, and it does take somebody watchdogging things when there are problems. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Good evening. My name is Dave Deppner. Our family corporation is called Mapala Development. We moved to Tacoma Park in 1982 and began to acquire apartments. So we worked here as landlords well before the rent control situation began. So we do know a little bit about the situation. We made some money over the years. I think we've been pretty good and pretty efficient landlords. As rent control came on, the income from these properties was not coming in in proportion to the rent. So profits began to drop. Over the last two years, it's been nothing. And then this past year, 2005, our losses were more than $700 per tenant, primarily because of increases in taxes, which were pretty staggering, because of increases in gas prices and other utilities, especially electric. There was just no way to make a profit. I came here last week just to listen and was surprised at a few things I heard. I heard a lot of sentiment for the idea of keeping the character of Tacoma Park as it is, and that being one of the justifications for rent controls. However, we're not seeing it in our apartments, and we don't have that many. We have two tenants with income over $70,000 a year. They're being protected by rent control. Along with that, I also learned, or at least heard last week, that the city sent representatives to Annapolis to try to influence the state legislature in legislation regarding the ability of tenants to sell their apartments or to convert them into condominiums. I would surely think this suggests some sort of bias on behalf of this legislative body. I'd very much like to know what was the purpose of the city going up there and trying to affect this legislation. As I say, we're up against the wall. We're not that rich. And we had a discussion after this meeting last Monday night. We decided we'll go along with what's happening through the end of this year. But at the end of this year, unless things change, seriously, we're going to have to remove all of our apartments from the market and go the way some others have gone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? All right.
I'm Diana Kohn, Jefferson Avenue, and I'm here tonight as a representative of St. Tacoma and also as a columnist for the Tacoma Voice. And I just wanted to mention that the column this month, which you'll see tomorrow or the next day, addresses an old affiliation that we had with Sister Cities. And it came about because I met the, one of the Brazilian exchange students who was here 30 years ago, a couple weeks, two weeks ago. Talked with her, with Belle Ziegler, who was part of the Sister Cities Committee. And I learned a whole lot about the benefits of this program. And in pursuance of the story, I've discovered that the Sister City International still exists. It's been around for 50 years this year. The executive director of Sister Cities lives in Tacoma Park. And so there's still a very active Sister City International organization, mostly online, mostly connecting people with other countries, and you learn what they do in other countries. So it occurs to me that I would like to pose the question to the council as to whether they might consider reviving the Sister City affiliation with Jacié, Brazil, which is just south of Salvador, the old capital of Brazil. The two exchange students, one of whom lives here and one of whom is the one I visited with, both know the mayor in Jacié. They are willing to be our emissaries if we would desire to do that. And the end of the story is that the director at Sister Cities tells me membership is $340 a year for the city and carries no obligatory requirements other than participating in their website and their programs that they have available. So I posed the question.
If the council would like, I'd be happy to put this as a discussion item before the council.
Yeah, I think it'd be very helpful.
I will do that. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, we'll go on to the city manager's updates.
Just a few things on the community center. As a reminder, there will be construction starting in the lobby outside of this council chamber beginning next Tuesday. And both the lobby will be closed off as well as this chamber. During the time period of roughly April 11th through May 5th, a number of the city meetings, including the meetings of the city council, will be relocated from their customary location. Would encourage the public to check with the city clerk's office if there's any questions about where a meeting you'd like to attend will actually be held. In terms of the council meetings on April 17th, April 24th, and May 1st, those will be held at Tacoma Park Middle School. Did want to just mention to the council, as you were aware, there were some issues that arose with the purchase of the Sony AnyCast equipment last week. We are in the process of trying to resolve those issues. The city attorney's office had mentioned that the list of companies engaged in nuclear weapons contained an error. The city attorney's office indicated that is just a guide, and certainly the council is free to follow it or not follow it. The Nuclear Free Committee has proposed that the city council take action to basically formally amend that list to reflect the error that was made. And I believe that will be forthcoming perhaps as early as next week, depending on when the item can be scheduled. What this means, however, is that the equipment that the staff had originally intended to purchase in order to tape the meetings at the middle school will likely not arrive in time in order for us to use it to tape the meeting. Ms. Moffett did return from vacation today, and I kind of gave her an update. We are pursuing what other options there may be to tape the council meetings when they are over at the middle school. But at this point, I can't really make a commitment whether we'll be in a position to tape those meetings for subsequent broadcasting or not.
We're able to tape other kinds of events. Is the council meeting different?
My understanding is like when we do the Folk Festival and things, it's a little bit easier to use than when it's an outside location. I'm not going to pretend to understand all the technology, but I think Ms. Moffett and her staff are just examining some different options. It may be doable, but we may have limited camera angles and things like that. Obviously, she just returned today, so she's exploring some options, and we'll update the council later in the week. Thank you.
Yeah, I thank you. I know that many people use the recordings as a matter of record, so I think it's helpful. I'm not so sure that we're worried about camera angles as we are about just having a tape for the record.
Yeah, obviously, I think Ms. Moffett and her staff do an excellent job, and certainly will make every effort in order to televise meetings. I would note that if we are able to tape them, they will not be broadcast live, but would basically be recorded and then subsequently aired. So as soon as more information becomes available, let the council know. And certainly advise the public next week when we meet. Also on the community center project, I wanted to mention that a portion of the parking lot is currently closed and over the period of time beginning today through Friday, April 1st. As there are some repairs that James Effnot needs to do to the parking lot, there will be sections of the parking lot that will be closed during that time period. To the extent possible, we'll try to get information out on the website when we know when parking will be restricted. But I do know during that time period that James Effnot will be doing some work, and various sections will be closed during that time period. So kind of stay tuned. Parking in the back will continue to be available. Obviously, what that means is with the rear entrance closed, depending on the time of day, you can either traipse through the computer learning center or at least for the period of this week, you can enter through Grant Avenue. But certainly, we'll do everything we can to put information on the website in terms of directing people visiting to the community center to know where to park. This has to do with some of the concrete issues that we discussed last week. There are still some discussions ongoing regarding the exact nature of those repairs, but there's some certain other items where there's concrete work involved that are not in dispute. And so James Effnot is going ahead and proceeding with those repairs. In terms of Phase 2, I did want to mention to the council that the process of installing the security door systems is kind of underway. James, not James Effnot, TRG Construction will basically be doing extensive work on the security door systems from April 4th basically through the end of the project in May. TRG is currently on schedule and expecting to be done sometime in the month of May. So that project is going well and certainly on schedule. If there's no questions about the community center project, there's just a couple other items I wanted to report on. Suzanne Ludlow, who is our community and Suzanne Ludlow, who is our community and government liaison, did just want me to take a few moments and basically touch a little bit on some legislative items that she thought might be of interest to the council. As the council is aware, but perhaps the community is not, the city was successful in getting $360,000, $60,000 through the bond bill process. And want to take this opportunity on behalf of the staff and on behalf of the council to thank Senator Ida Rubin, delegates Peter Franto, Sheila Hickson, Gareth Murray, and Charles Burckley for their assistance in securing these funds. And as a reminder, those funds are basically earmarked for the proposed gym construction. Some other items that Ms. Ludlow asked me to advise the council of is the issue of municipal aggregation of electrical energy. It's still being debated. It is basically moving through the House and the Senate. Obviously, as further information becomes available, the staff will be updating the council, and Ms. Ludlow will be tracking that legislation through this last week of the legislative session. The municipal streetlight bill that the council took action on, you previously passed a resolution endorsing the proposed bill, will basically be heard this Wednesday, April 5th. It's Ms. Ludlow's understanding that there will not be much of an opportunity for public comment at the hearing. Her intention is to make sure that the committee that is considering that bill has a copy of the resolution adopted by the council. In terms of the county council, the city is signed up to testify on Wednesday, April 5th, at 1:30 to comment on the county's operating budget. I believe the mayor is scheduled to attend that hearing. On March 27th, Ms. Ludlow had sent an email out to the council basically advising you of what topics she planned to cover in the testimony that she's in the process of drafting, and that will be the city's request for funding for the gym, support for the renovation work at Tacoma Piney Branch Park, and a request for assistance for economic development along New Hampshire Avenue. Suzanne's intention is to basically email out early tomorrow morning some draft testimony to be given on Wednesday, and she would just basically ask for the council's help in reviewing that at your earliest convenience and getting any comments back to her. Are there any questions just about the legislative items?
Thank you. I was just wondering on the electric aggregation, since this council, I believe, not this council, but the previous council, did pass a resolution in support of aggregation, I wonder if it would be helpful to pass a copy of that to the state legislators?
I'm sure it certainly couldn't hurt. And if Suzanne has not already done so, I'll ask her to make sure that gets forwarded to the appropriate officials.
Actually, I was up along with Doug Duncan and Mayor Larry Giamo of Rockville in testifying in favor of it this past week. So it was sort of a, it came up at the last minute, and MML wanted some of the municipalities to come up, and so several of us did.
Thank you.
Just a few other items, more as kind of informational points and any need for council direction. As you know, we've been talking about scheduling a tour with certain county officials and county staff for the New Hampshire Avenue redevelopment. Staff is still working on trying to line up some dates that work for Derek Berlage, Councilmember Perez, and David Ogerley, who's the Economic Development Director for Montgomery County, as well as Will Campos. I just wanted to go ahead and let the council know the dates that we are sort of working with so that you can maybe earmark these on your calendar. And basically, the times will either range on both, all these dates, from either 9 to 12 or 1 to 4, depending on availability. Those would be Friday, April 21st, Wednesday, April 26th, and Thursday, April 27th. Right now, the staff is focusing on basically trying to get a handle on what dates work for some of the county officials. And basically, as soon as we have the dates narrowed down a little bit, we'll let you know. But those are the dates that we have forwarded to those officials and are asking for some feedback from them on what times and dates would work for them. The other thing I just wanted to mention, and some of these are just requests from the staff to get your feedback at some future date. Sarah Daines, our Director of Housing and Community Development, had sent an email out to the council on March 31st about the Affordable Housing Forum that I know some of the council members are working with staff on in conjunction with COG and the Washington Area Housing Partnership. As Ms. Daines indicated in her email on March 31st, the COG staff has asked for some input from the city in terms of resources and programming that you would like specifically covered in the forum, if you do have some thoughts on that. I think Ms. Daines had provided you with a link to the Washington Area Housing Partnership's website. And if you could just let her know if there are specific topics that you'd like to see covered at that forum, that would be very helpful to the COG staff as well as our own staff. And she requested that that information be forwarded to her by April 5th. And the last item I just wanted to mention, unfortunately, he has already left, is to thank Mr. Bates for taking the time to attend this evening. And obviously, we're all hopeful that we can get up to full staffing. I did feel, however, that I just wanted to mention that this is not an issue that is unique to Tacoma Park. Some of the council members and the community may have seen, there was an article in the Washington Post, I believe it was about a week ago, I think it was March 27th, talking about the issue of police staffing across this country. And they interviewed a number of police chiefs in jurisdictions ranging all the way from Councilmember Clay's old stomping grounds in California all the way back to our area. And it is just a challenge nationwide. So I did not want to leave a misimpression that this is an issue that only Tacoma Park is struggling with. It's been an issue in my professional career for probably the first past five to seven years in terms of finding qualified police recruits. And certainly, I think the council has taken a number of steps, including authorizing staff to work on the take-home car policy with the police union to try to address any deficiencies that we might have in terms of our competitiveness.
On that last item on police staffing, I'm concerned, though, I know that our officers are working 12-hour shifts, and I'm concerned about the overtime. Could you give me an idea of what it means hour-wise for an officer? What is the maximum number of hours a day that any one officer works, and how many hours per week?
I'd be happy to get that information from Chief Kramer.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, unless there's any questions the council may have.
I don't see any. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is our special session item, which is a resolution regarding Arbor Day. The city normally designates our Arbor Day celebration, and the intention this year is to celebrate Arbor Day on Saturday, April 8th, which is this upcoming Saturday.
Move the resolution.
Okay, it's been moved in seconds. Any council comment on this resolution?
Yes, I'm curious that I know in past years, Arbor Day was, had a lot of work done by the Committee on the Environment. And I think in the last couple of years, Public Works has done more of the work on that. And I'm just curious how it's going to be done this year? Is Public Works going to take the lead on that, or is it going to be a Committee on the Environment?
It has actually been a kind of collaborative effort. I believe in recent years, Councilmember Siemens, the Public Works Department has basically broadened those groups that participate beyond just the Committee on the Environment. Those groups are cited in the resolution, which would include the Tree Commission, the Horticulture Club, the Montgomery County Master Gardeners Program, Montgomery County Forest Conservancy District Board, Friends of Slager Creek, and other agencies. So certainly, I think the staff has recognized the important role that the Committee on the Environment plays. I believe that the city arborist has also, though, extended an olive branch and asked for other groups to participate.
Okay, so the arborist then is going to be taking the lead those for organizing either?
Truthfully, I'm not sure what the current status is. I talked to Ms. Braithwaite about this last year. I think the council is aware, the city arborist has been on a leave of absence, medical leave of absence. I know she was going to try to go through his notes and touch base to make sure everything was proceeding smoothly, but I would say that this Arbor Day may be a little bumpier because Mr. Linkletter has been out for some time now. If you'd like, I can touch base with Ms. Braithwaite tomorrow and send you an email notifying the council of exactly what the plans are.
Somebody has to wrap a lot of tree seedlings.
Yeah, no, we have always relied on volunteers to help us. That is a very time-consuming process.
Any other council questions, comments? Are there any public comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none, the resolution is before the council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution passed. We're now moving to our work session, and the first item on our work session agenda is a discussion of the parking area behind 7118 Carroll Avenue.
I think I'm going to make some introductory comments if I may. As the council may recall, the parking area at 7118 Carroll Avenue was basically moved from the Carroll Avenue side of the property to the rear of the property, basically along Park Avenue. A group of neighbors had addressed the council, and I apologize, I don't remember the exact date, some time ago, to basically express their concern about that relocation of the parking area and the negative impact that they feel it had on their street, basically. At the request of Councilmember Austin Lane, the staff had basically approached Lardner Klein to perhaps get some consulting assistance in terms of what options might be available to address the concerns of the neighbors. And a copy of that proposal was included in your agenda packet. Upon further discussion, staff would basically like to suggest that we do contract with Lardner Klein, but perhaps amend the scope somewhat from what is included in your packet. Our initial thought would be that rather than Mr. Klein's suggestion that two specific options be focused on, that essentially any contract that we would enter into the firm would basically entail having an initial meeting with the neighbors along Park Avenue and just the surrounding area to basically listen to their concerns, perhaps get some feedback from the community about what ideas they have, give Mr. Klein an opportunity to basically consider those thoughts, evaluate their feasibility, and basically meet for a second time with the neighborhood in terms of what concepts he believed were perhaps the three most feasible ideas. Have the neighbors basically vet his thoughts, and once there at least appears to be a finite group of concepts that we're working with, those concepts would then be brought back to the council for its consideration. Obviously, depending on these ideas, and we don't know what they are, there will be certain cost implications associated with them. And before we would proceed to a kind of full-blown final design process, I do think those alternatives would need to be brought back before the council with associated cost estimates, so you could provide direction to staff. I believe there are some residents of Park Avenue in attendance. Ms. Shapiro, are you going to basically be the spokesperson for the neighbors?
Dan and I.
Oh, sure. What I wanted to suggest, and we had, I think, both Councilmember Austin Lane and Mayor Porter were supportive of this, is those are obviously staff's thoughts in terms of how we should proceed, but thought it might be helpful if the neighbors had an opportunity to basically comment on these suggestions before the council opens up their discussion. Yeah, thank you.
First, I just want to say that we appreciate the steps that the city has begun to take in the staff in this process, and we really are looking forward to the idea and hoping that the city will approve the idea of engaging a consultant, an architectural consultant such as Mr. Klein, to work with us. And we think that although we have some concerns that we would like to address today, we think that this is really, you know, a good first step. Should we, you know, we, I could mention some of the, you know, what occurred to us when we were looking at this to see if, you know, that could be part of a discussion. We like the idea, first of all, of starting with the opportunity for the community, including Mr. Ramos, of course, and the neighbors, and then also Historic Tacoma is very interested in sitting in, and Anne Fabregas also mentioned that she would be interested in being there also at the outset to be able to share ideas that we have with the consultant before, you know, he starts working on a design. Because what we're trying to do this time around is to really start from scratch again. And this is the other part of, I think, the major concern that we have and that we hope to address tonight, is that what wasn't clear from the particular design proposal that the architect gave was that we are going to have the opportunity to look at this as a new start. Rather than look at this as, okay, we have this hunk of concrete, and now we have to figure out how to mitigate the effects of the concrete. We would really like to be able to see this process become something where the house, you know, is restored to something of its original character or quality so that, you know, we don't have to make a choice between the front and the back, between, you know, which one is going to go for the other one. And in order to do that, I think we would like to see something clearly set out that we are going to be able to look at this, not from the perspective of what already exists and how, you know, to fix what's there, but start from scratch and look and see what's the best design for this property. And the reason why we were a little concerned, because a couple of the points, the way that they were couched, were a little bit unclear. It talked about the design services should examine how best to redesign the parking area to allow for installation of a tree buffer as originally proposed. It wasn't clear whether that was originally proposed from the city's first design, which had been rejected by HBC. And then he also said that his biggest concern with the work is that it would be very difficult to fit four cars within the footprint shown on the diagram. And so that is also unclear in terms of whether he's been given the impression somehow that he has to work within the context of something that already exists. So that's something that we would like to have clarified.
Could we just get an answer on that, Barb? Is this something that you think from the scope that you're familiar with? We have this flexibility going forward? I think certainly, you know, this was just an initial draft based on some verbal discussions with Mr. Klein. And I think certainly, we can enter into whatever scope of service the council would like. One thing, I think, two points, I guess, that we do need to keep in mind is we approached Mr. Klein, we've worked with him before. The scope probably, in order to stay within the confines of the city's procurement ordinance, needs to be relatively defined, and we have a limit, as staff is aware, of $5,000 unless we actually issue a formal proposal. So I think we would have to have some follow-up discussions with Mr. Klein in terms of getting a better handle in terms of the breadth of the options and what that will mean cost-wise. I think in terms of the issue with the four spaces, the staff did have some discussions earlier today with the property owner, Mr. Ramos, and I believe this was mentioned in the agenda packet. Obviously, he had four spaces when he was on the Carroll Avenue side. He has four spaces now that the lot is on the Park Avenue side. To date at least, Mr. Ramos, you know, has indicated that four spaces is a requirement. Obviously, he could change his opinion on that, but we can't dictate that he loses a parking space. And I believe the neighbors may have actually had some discussions amongst themselves. I think that is just one item that there may not be flexibility on and that we may just have to ensure that whatever options are being discussed reflect that reality, if in fact that is Mr. Ramos's position. I think in saying that, I think Alana Blanchard had talked to him. He obviously is a part of the neighborhood, you know, isn't trying to cause a hardship for anyone, but he obviously has rental properties that he needs to maintain their viability. So that's really the only constraint potentially that I can see, Councilmember Austin Lane, that we don't control.
Can I just get a quick clarification? Barb, on the number of units in the building?
I believe it is.
And what the requirement is for, so there are four units, so that the requirement is one spot per unit? Is that, is that something that's a county requirement for a license or?
I believe that there are currently four units. Two of them are two-bedroom, and two of them are single-bedroom, although one of them, I believe, is actually a studio. And six spaces are required. The city did obtain a waiver in order to only install four spaces.
Thank you.
Before you go, weren't there five spaces to begin with on the front side?
There were between five and six, depending on which stripes you counted.
Five spaces with 25% less concrete. They had 900 square feet. We now have 1,159 square feet in the backyard. So they're substantially more paving.
We've talked a few times with Mr. Ramos. We're actually looking forward to working with him. I think he's actually very pleased about the idea of reworking that backyard himself. He was a little bit taken aback or dismayed, I would even say, by how it unfolded and, you know, what it turned out to be. And the picket fence didn't really help much because it's like this chintzy little picket fence that's not even as high as the city said it would be, which is okay, actually, because we always understood that that was going to just be a temporary protection for him so that people wouldn't be walking through his yard until this is finally fixed. But we're looking forward to working with Mr. Ramos. And I would, I guess my concern is that I don't want the city to feel that it has to foreclose options rather than let the neighborhood have the opportunity to have as much discretion as possible. the neighborhood have the opportunity to, to have as much discretion as possible to try to figure something out with the designer. I understand that costs are an issue, but these, for example, the four cars, that's not a cost issue. And then Historic Tacoma had some really interesting ideas of how to work potentially four spaces in the yard that wouldn't necessarily only entail the backyard, and so that was another, and that would, would restore the, the house to something that's closer to what the original house had, because it did not have four spaces in the backyard. It had a port cochere, so that there was a front driveway going through, and Historic Tacoma was very interested in exploring the idea of trying to bring it back to something more akin to what it was originally. Now, that's definitely could be a cost issue, but what we would like to be able to have the opportunity to do is really think outside the box here and work, you know, with, with the property owner, without prior limitations from the council, you know, telling the designer that, you know, this is, you can do this, but you can't do this, and you can do this, but you can't do that.
My, my comment, so I'm clear about cost, is that we can certainly work with the neighbors to develop a scope of service, depending on what that scope of service ends up being may dictate whether or not the city has to actually issue a formal request for proposal. There are requirements in terms of the process that we need to follow that are set forth in the city's procurement code.
So the $4,800 estimate is something that entails them coming up with the, the two options that are directed here?
Not necessarily. I mean, that, yeah, the costs that Mr. Klein gave us in his proposal were sort of predicated on that scope. I think depending on the direction we get from the council this evening, what we would do is probably initially go back to Mr. Klein, kind of lay out how we saw this process unfolding. He would have to give us an estimated price. If it exceeds the $5,000 limit in the city's procurement code, that would necessitate us soliciting proposals from other firms.
Right. Now, are there any of these items that we could provide to him so that we're not starting from scratch, such as the survey, anything that we can provide him with?
That is not information that is currently available. When Mr. Klein gave us his, you know, initial proposal based on some verbal discussions, his assumption was that we had a survey that he is requesting in hand. That was not the case. He then revised the proposal to reflect that cost. One thing that we could explore with him is whether or not that survey could be done by another firm. Many architects, however, prefer to have the survey done kind of in-house, so there's some continuity in terms of the information flow, but that is not something we've yet explored with him pending the outcome of tonight's discussions. I mean, I think at this point, really, all the staff is really looking for is some direction that the council, you know, is comfortable with our basically getting additional information on retaining a consultant, recognizing that this is not a, a budgeted cost, and at some point, we would basically go forth, you know, work out the scope, working with the neighbors, and then we'll basically kind of take it from there as far as what is required by the city's procurement code.
Is it, is it worth going to him, sort of explaining the situation and asking him what he could do for a $5,000 limitation? It sounds like he, given this proposal that he made before, that he could do probably a fair amount within that amount of money.
That, that would be my guess. I mean, what we would probably do is, obviously, he had step number three, which was to prepare two options. Obviously, we would not have him do that work, so there may be some flexibility within the cost he originally proposed in terms of the number of meetings. Obviously, part of his initial scope included preparing a final design. We're suggesting that this be more sort of a conceptual design process, at which point it would come back before the council, before we would enter into any agreement for final design services. So I think there is some flexibility. Until we talk to Mr. Klein, I can't really give you a fair indication of how much flexibility there is. Based on my discussions with staff earlier today, our initial thought is that it, it likely is achievable within the $5,000 limit in the city's procurement code, but obviously, Mr. Klein would be the final, you know, determination of that in terms of what his charges are and what be he would charge for this work.
I have one additional question, which is that if we went out to bid, we would have to come up with a fairly specific RFP in order to allow more than one firm to bid on it, wouldn't we?
Yes, we would.
And that sounds like it goes counter to what the neighbors are trying to do.
I, I think certainly that would be a challenge in terms of preparing a, a request for proposal that you would send out to, to firms. Obviously, the city has worked with Mr. Klein before. We've had a good working relationship with him. I think because of his affiliate, past affiliation with the city, I think he would try to be very accommodating, and I think has been in this proposal, so our goal would be to try to see if we could work something out with him, because I do think it would be difficult to basically prepare a definitive enough request for proposal to get firm pricing.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. First of all, I'm really disappointed that we're at this point in this discussion, at this point in the overall project. I think that, you know, we're talking about, should we have the community involved in these discussions and decisions, but I think the community was involved in discussions and decisions that were made earlier in the project and ended up being surprised at, at what was going on with the size and the amount of paving that was done and the impact on, on Park Avenue.
Yeah, actually, the community on Park Avenue was never informed. The community on Carroll Avenue was informed, and they decided to put it in the back. And that was only after the, the, it was, it was really, it was only after Historic Preservation, we, we received a notice that, that work was being done in the back, but we didn't ever get the plan. We only got a picture with trees, and so the people, the community that's directly affected now actually never knew what was going to be happening until the concrete was poured.
Okay, so that answers the first question. Obviously, the community's going to be affected and has to be involved at this point, the community that is being affected, and so, you know, certainly applaud the idea that we're going to have these first meetings with the community to decide. Beyond that, it seems to have the cart before the horse to try to decide how much this is going to cost before we know what it is that this is, what needs to be done, and, so I don't think, first of all, I don't think we're ready to do an RFP to go out and try to decide, you know, we're not ready to give a list of what, what is to be accomplished other than, we know we need, need to have some community meetings and need to discuss some design concepts at least, and then we'll have some idea of what, what it is that we want to go out and ask for bid for.
Yeah, the request for proposal, just to be clear, is not anticipating or predetermining what those improvements might be. It's merely for the consulting assistants to basically get to that point. Obviously, the staff are not architects, landscape architects. We just believe it would be beneficial to have some technical assistance, I think as suggested by Councilmember Austin Lane, but before we go down this path, whether it's hiring Mr. Klein or depending on the estimated value of the services issuing an RFP, we usually bring items back before the council that are not included in the city's budget before proceeding. I think once that specific alternatives are identified, then I do think that needs to come back before the council so you can give some direction on any kind of capital improvements. But at this point, we're merely talking about whether the council is amenable to hiring Mr. Klein or some other consultant to work with staff and with the community.
To come up with the design, not to actually implement any remediation.
That is correct. To develop alternatives, I think, more specifically.
Okay.
I just want to clarify a couple of things that I heard. So I, as I understand it, then the community is interested in seeing included in the design discussions, changing the Carroll Avenue streetscape to some extent back to what it was before the streetscape project?
No, not at all, not at all.
Isn't that what the drive-through, wouldn't, wouldn't, if you put a driveway through from the front to the back, wouldn't you have to reopen the curb cut on the front side? Or did I misunderstand that?
The community, the, the Park Avenue residents are not particularly interested in any design now. I was raising that as just one idea that Historic Tacoma actually came up with, because the original house, not what it was during, before it was, before the parking lot was taken away, but the original, you know, the Warren Harding Sister House that was there before Carroll Avenue became what it was, actually did have a driveway with a port cochere that went around, and so the car, there was one car that could have gone in the front and the back, and Historic Tacoma mentioned that as one possible alternative to think of in terms of creatively make, creating an opportunity for one car to be in the front. It's not, certainly, I mean, we're not-
But it wouldn't necessarily mean that there would be a cut? They would, they would come through the backside and then park in the front?
No.
No. It probably would entail having a curb cut on Carroll Avenue.
Okay. Also, that, that sounds like a lot of concrete, because I, I did hear a concern that there's now 1,200 square feet of concrete instead of 900 square feet of concrete, and it seems like that driveway would entail a lot of concrete in addition to what's already there.
Actually, I, I think what I'm understanding from the, the residents' desires is they would like to look at the entire area instead of trying to take a little bit of concrete off here and add a little bit over there. They would like to look at the backyard and see the best way to configure the parking, and if that meant one space would go under the portico and three spaces would go somewhere around there, and then they would be joined by a driveway that went out the back, that that could be possible. Right now, there's a driveway on the other side from where the portico is and, or the carport, I think, is the right-
Port cochere.
Yeah. And, and so they're disconnected. What, what, what I would like to see is for us to go forward with what the city manager has proposed. I think her idea is right of having the neighbors meet with the consultant first, and then the consultant come up with some proposals, and then meet with the community group again, and then the options be forwarded to the council once they have been vetted with the community. That seems like a solid plan, and I believe this council just needs to let the city manager know that we want this consultant fee funded. I'm in favor of doing that.
I, I would also be in favor of doing that. I think that the, the way that we would probably get the most flexibility is to say, okay, for the $5,000 that we can spend without going through the RFP process, what could the consultant do? I mean, you'd probably have to sit down with him and talk to him about what the goal was and what had happened in the history, and then our experience with him has been that he's fairly flexible and that he can, he, he sort of understands what we're trying to do, and he could probably configure something that we could then take a look at and, or you could take a look at, and then go forward with.
Please? I'm in favor of the proposal to have this landscape architect do this for up to 5,000, to have the flexibility for possible designs with the caveat that when it comes back, I hope that flexibility leads to a design that doesn't involve a whole lot of costs that the city ends up having to do, because I won't look as kindly on that.
Other comments?
Just make one comment, so like while the neighbors are here, is what we will do tomorrow is basically discuss some of the conversation that took place this evening with Mr. Klein, see what we can work out, provided we don't run into any issues cost-wise. We'll ask him to draft a revised proposal, and if it's okay, I'll just send it out to the same distribution list, Ms. Shapiro, that I've done in the past, if that's acceptable.
I think that would be great.
Okay. Is there anything, Dan, that you wanted to add?
I just wanted to make one sug- I had occasion to speak to Ali Khan, I believe that's his last name, the city engineer, today. The speed bumps were actually scheduled to be reinstalled on Park Avenue today. Fortunately, the weather held it off till Thursday. I would like to suggest that they not install the one directly behind 7118 Carroll, because way back in one of the original discussions of this parking lot configuration was the fact that the city does not like to make curb cuts which straddle. Speed bumps, it's an opportunity to install it once instead of twice if our design changes potentially where the curb cut occurs. So if we didn't spend $2,000 twice, that'd be fine by me.
Right. I appreciate you bringing that up.
We just added another $2,000 to add to the work.
If I may, I had had a discussion with Ms. Brayth Wade last week about this, and that was followed up by email, so we share your concern, and the public works department is aware not to reinstall those speed bumps.
Great.
Good. Okay. Well, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
The council will now take a short recess, and we will come back for the final item on our work session agenda.
Oh, here it is. Over here.
The kinds of things that we can do with rent stabilization to make it more efficient in achieving that goal. If, I don't know that it's, it would necessarily be very productive to debate the pros and cons of rent stabilization unless we have on the table another method of doing the same thing, that is achieving affordable housing. And so I would suggest that if people want to come up with other alternatives, or if they think rent stabilization isn't worth pursuing, if they come up with very specific alternatives. We've spent several weeks going through rent stabilization in very, in great detail, looking at very specific impacts, very specific kinds of things that we could do. And I think if someone wishes to propose something as an alternative, that we should be able to go through that alternative in equally, at an equal level of detail. And so it would be helpful if there is somebody who's interested in following up with another alternative, that we get an example so that we can look at in the same level of detail. So I guess what I would start with in terms of the discussion is to say that I think there are things that we can do to make rent stabilization more efficient. We've talked about a number of them. Various people have brought them to our attention. We can probably make the capital improvement process a little bit more efficient. I think there are things that we could do to perhaps make it a little bit more sensible, maybe reduce the number of items that are eligible for capital improvements. But I think, and also I, we've talked about, for example, allowing property owners to increase rents at a time when utilities are going very high for their actual increased costs of utilities. But I, in, in all the years that we have been looking at the issue of affordable housing in Tacoma Park, rent stabilization has been the only program that we have consistently been able to use that actually maintains the quantity of affordable housing that we have in Tacoma Park. And as I said, if, if someone wants to come up with an alternative, I think we need to look at it in the same level of detail that we did. All programs have their pros and cons. Rent stabilization is no different from anything else. And in order to take a fair look at, excuse me, take a fair look at other kinds of suggestions, I think we would look, need to look at them in the same level of detail. So that was, that's the thoughts that I would put on the table to open the discussion.
I think that it's, it's not a secret that I have issues with rent stabilization in terms of it being an equitable approach, in terms of rent stabilization, hitting the targets that we intend to see rent stabilization hit, and some of the other unintended consequences. I think that to move forward with rent stabilization, or any other kind of an affordable housing program, we should take a look at first, well, what our current program is, which we've been doing, but I think we haven't, we haven't ever looked at the University of Maryland report and kind of discussed item by item, some of the issues that have come out of the University of Maryland report. Both the things that would point to positive impacts of rent stabilization, or issues in rent stabilization. And so I think before we could really talk about how are we going to tinker with rent stabilization and make adjustments to it, I think we need to have a, a better understanding of some of the, the broader underlying issues than even just what has been brought before us by the staff. Now that seems kind of daunting, because the level of information that has been brought before us by the staff, you know, is reams and reams and reams of paper worth of, of information. But I still feel like even having listened to all of that, we're not really talking about what I think are some of the bigger issues, like how does, does rent sta, are we targeting the right group of people that we want to have in our affordable housing programs? And what are the, what are the other costs to the city of running the rent stabilization programs? How much ultimately does it cost us to run the rent stabilization program? Would there be other ways, other kinds of programs that would achieve a goal of affordable housing for a specific targeted group of people? So I don't feel like we've gotten to the kinds of questions in this discussion that I really wanted to see us address.
I would say that I've never been a particular fan of rent control. In my years on the council, I felt fairly alone in some of the comments that I've made. Kathy, you were, you were talking about the efficiency of it. The words that I would use to describe what I'd like to see happen is that, is that anything we do be fairer to everybody involved and simpler. One of my main objections over the years has been the level of detail that's involved in, in the ordinance that we have. And I think it, it's very daunting for a number of people to come to an understanding of that. I think there have been, there's been some progress made. I've been particularly appreciative of the efforts that the staff has made to have training sessions for landlords, that I think has been helpful, making sure that they understand it. I think there's still probably a lot of landlords who don't understand either the program that we currently have, or the program that some of us might have thought we had. I'm thinking particularly of last week's, was it last week's discussion on the hardship petition? And what it's, what sounded like was the, was Mark's characterization of the intent of the discussion when that was done, and the sense that maybe that's not the way it reads. I think getting into those, those levels of dealing with this, and the, and the various constraints on people in trying to deal with it, caused a lot of difficulty and may have caused some of the, some of the headaches that people have encountered in dealing with it. I do feel like we need to, I'll back up from that. I think that the discussion that we've been having now was a discussion that there was some resistance to having at the beginning of the council taking this up, over the last however many meetings we've had on at this time. I think this level of review is, to this point, has been very helpful. I'm glad that we're having this discussion. And I feel like at this point, I'm open to any number of discussions that we could have about tweaking the existing one, about looking at something different. I think it's, it's entirely helpful and appropriate to have this level of discussion of policy that's this important to so many people in the city.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Start off by saying that I am a, a strong supporter of affordable housing in Tacoma Park. And I, I think the city, and everyone in the city, benefits greatly from having the mix of income levels of residents within this city. And I think Tacoma Park does that to a degree that is much more successful than any other community that I'm aware of within the local area. When I contrast Tacoma Park and our housing situation to Montgomery County, I feel much better about myself because I'm a member of Tacoma Park community than I do as, from a housing perspective, as looking at just Montgomery County. We have a much larger stock of affordable housing, it appears. And no, I don't have the numbers to back that up. Rent control, or rent stabilization, has been a tool that Tacoma Park has used to continue to provide, or to ensure that we have affordable, affordable housing available to the residents, and available for people to, who are not able to pay the high price of housing. Does that mean it's the best solution? I don't know. It's the best one that we have seen, the best one that I, that I know of. It also, as we've looked at this, and I appreciate again, I'll hate to be repetitive, but I appreciate the information that was provided by our housing department. It's been very instructive. Are there things that, are there problems? Yes, I certainly can see that there need to be at least tweaks to our rent stabilization law. I hear from landlords, like the gentleman in the back of the room tonight, and hear that there, that there are things that we need to, to look at and consider. I've also been, I think, through these discussions over the past few weeks, the one question that's come up quite frequently in different ways is, and I think it's a legitimate question, is, you know, what are our goals? What do we really hope to accomplish with this? My goal with affordable housing programs within Tacoma Park is to make sure that we have a, a broad dis, diversity in income levels of residents of this city. With that, I'm not sure that, that the University of Maryland report raises necessarily the right questions, or that they have presented an unbiased perspective. I think it's interesting information. I would just suggest that if we're going to look at, at this at, at more depth, that we would have to ensure that we get a cross-section of, of reports and a cross-section, section of information to look at. Where does that leave me? I'm still a backer of rent stabilization, or rent control in Tacoma Park, interested in seeing how we can improve it, because I see that there are, there is a waning amount of rental, rental properties within rental units within the city, as there are within the county and within the region. And if there's anything we can do to change our housing laws to help to, to stem that, that flood, I would be very open to that. If people have proposals for other programs that would ensure, again, a higher level of, of affordable housing with, in the city, I'm open to listening to that and discussing it, and, and looking at the, at the comparisons. But right now, I haven't heard any other proposals. The, I've heard three things, either keep rent stabilization the way it is, make some minor changes, or do away with it. And I'm not willing to do away with it.
I think, I think Terry hit the nail on the head, and I would broaden his, his comment when he compared, compared what we do to Montgomery County. There is, not only does Montgomery County do as good a job as we do of preserving affordable housing, there is no housing program in any city in this country, period, that does anything comparable to what we do to provide affordable housing. Most cities in this country do not have rent control. Most urban centers in this country are absolutely wired to slums. So you've got market rate housing at fairly high rents in many cases, that's an absolutely slummed condition. So the notion that somehow, that if you go to market, you solve all the problems, and the people living in these housing, is, is patently untrue in public truth, by 99.9% of the, of the cities in the United States today. There, there are programs which may provide some limited affordable housing, but there is no city that has managed to solve this problem. And I wouldn't say that the city of Tacoma, Tacoma Park has managed to solve the problem. But we've probably done more than most cities in this country, other than the handful that still retain rent stabilization. And I think that's really important. When I look around, you know, for example, I read Anthony Downs' piece, or diatribe against rent control. I actually had a conversation with him, and he said, "Well, I'm not actually against rent control in all circumstances." I thought that was interesting. But when you read his piece about rent control, and then his citation of a number of programs that you could do to replace rent control, they're all theory. They don't exist anywhere. One program might exist in one place, another program might exist in another place, but the totality of the programs absolutely exists nowhere. A number of years ago, I did an exercise where somebody said, "Well, let's get rid of rent control and pay people allowances to continue to live in the buildings." And, you know, judging by the fact that most of our rent-controlled units are in areas that, that qualify for block grant assistance, which means that the overwhelming number of people who live in them are poor, you do some kind of calculation, and what do it take to keep those people in there at market rents? And it's multiples of what we spend on an affordable housing program. And you start adding hundreds of dollars a month to supplement people in thousands of units, 12 months a year, for as long as they're here. It was an enormous amount of money. I guess the question was asked, are we hitting the target population? I don't know exactly what that means. I mean, partly, the city's rent control law wasn't aimed at a population per se, though at the time when it was implemented, I'd say probably there was even less economic diversity in, in some of the rental areas than there is today. But the purpose of the rent stabilization law was to preserve the units, not necessarily preserve or protect the people who lived in there at the moment. If, if we were to only protect the people, if we were to target the law on people, then landlords would simply, over time, rent to people who didn't qualify for rent control and made too much money. And then you would solve the rent control problem by not having anybody left who needed it. That, that's, that's a simple solution to the problem. Vacancy decontrol, give people three, four years, get rid of the people who are there, no one will need rent control anymore, problem solved. And then we'd have our target population, we'd nobody. I mean, the, the point was, you're looking at the DC housing market, you're looking at, at the loss of, of units all over the DC area. The Washington Post runs yet another editorial last week where they talk about the affordable housing crisis and the diminishing supply of affordable housing. And I find it mind-boggling that, that we would on this council consider doing anything that reduced the number of units that exist. I mean, all we would be doing is contributing to the diminution of the supply of affordable housing. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me as a policy level on the regional basis, and it doesn't make sense to me as a policy on the local basis. And as I said before, I mean, I really do think this is a moral issue. In a, in a, in a society that is unable to provide an adequate amount of affordable housing, and we've got a stock of affordable housing, and the Supreme Court has said that rent stabilization is a legitimate tool that government can use to carry out a policy of maintaining affordable housing, I think it's, at the moment, the best tool that we have to use. Now, I could envision a more idyllic situation where tenants either owned all their units, or nonprofits owned all their units, and we didn't have to deal with this issue the way we're dealing with it now. But I don't see us making, I don't see us having the resources to make a transition to that in any kind of short term. I don't know of any, of Montgomery County or the state of Maryland having the resources, or even contemplating providing the resources that would allow us to make that tran, that transition. I, I also read the University of Maryland study, let's see, paid for by Southern Management, with a couple of carefully selected buildings, with the poster child doctor living in the apartment, and, you know, whatever he was, and why would this person, should we allow this person to live in a rent-controlled apartment and benefit from it? I mean, I guess we can find poster children for anything, if we look hard enough. But that person's not, is important to me, is the fact that that unit's, is affordable. And if that person leaves, somebody else of lesser means has the ability to apply for, to rent that unit and to get that unit. And, and that's, I thought, that, that was certainly the purpose in the origin of the rent control law in the city, in the last two revisions of the rent control law in the city, was to retain the stock of affordable housing, not just target people. Having said all that, I mean, we've revised the law a couple of times, and every time we've done it, it's been done with the consideration of making sure that the law was economically viable for the people who do the renting. Obviously, no one needs benefits if landlords don't have enough money to maintain their buildings. If they, if it's economically unprofitable, then our law becomes a taking and is ultimately indefensible in court. And I wouldn't want a law that was indefensible in court. And that was the basis of the revisions we've done in the past, was to make sure that our law is defensible in court. I think that, I mean, two of the things, or the thing that strikes me out of all of this, and I guess I disagree with the mayor's word, I mean, I don't, again, I don't see it as a matter of efficiency, and maybe Bruce's word fairness is, is the better word. If there are problems in, in terms of the extraordinary utility increases, and the inability of landlords to deal with the extraordinary utility increases, then that strikes me as something we ought to fix. I mean, it's, it's clear, and, and I think everybody needs to consider it, tenants and otherwise, that if a landlord does a hardship petition, they couldn't do a hardship petition until after they'd endured a year of extraordinarily high utility increases, for which they could not get an increase. And it seems to me that at one level, since we know that utility increases are coming, that they are announced in advance, that the city could look at a way to, to treat the formula, or look at the formula so that in those buildings where landlords do pay the utilities, there's an ability to make an adjustment to the rents, so that if Pepco announces a utility increase in July, then we figure out how that gets apportioned across landlords' costs and give them rent increase to allow them to, to deal with extraordinary utility increases. That's one thing that, that I think is fair and sensible, and if Pepco's going to go up 40%, and Washington Gas is going to follow suit, it's, it seems like a prudent thing to do. The other area of concern, and Bruce alluded to it also, is, is in the drafting and interpretation of law. And I asked Colleen this question, I don't know whether her, her favorite legislative aide has an answer to it. But when we drafted the law on hardship petition, we recognized that everybody would be able to use the 1990 base year. And as I read the law, there were a series of clauses that said, at the landlord's option, the landlord may use a 60-40 net operating income split, or the landlord may use a different base year, or the landlord, if they have the record, may use the law a year before rent control was instituted, I guess it was 1979. And apparently, that's not the way the law has been interpreted. And I'm not sure, Colleen can maybe tell me whether that, whether what we've done is the correct interpretation, or the incorrect interpretation, because there is a clause that says that the base year will be 1990 unless the landlord can convince COLTA that there's a justification for using any other year. The intention when we did this was to give landlords a number of different choices for picking a base year. And I think that, that if we, if the current law doesn't allow that, then that makes sense as a way of changing our law. And I thought of a couple of benefits that, that might address other issues that people have raised. One is, if you use the 60-40 split on net operating income, if a landlord better maintains their building, their 60% would be a higher number, and therefore, they would be eligible for, for rent increases based on what tenants have been asking for, which is, if I'm going to pay more money, I want more maintenance. And that seems to be a fair thing. The other thing it addresses, one of the things we've talked about in terms of the capital improvement petitions, which is the inclusion of what looked like maintenance items routinely in capital improvement petitions, because landlords didn't feel that they could get them out of a hardship petition. And by using the net operating income, and including maintenance, obviously, in that, then they would have, not have an incentive to use the capital improvement petition, which would be cumbersome, but could, could flat-out use the net operating income, show their expenses and their maintenance, show them straight up the way they're actually going to be accounted for on their taxes, and not rely on the misuse of, of the capital petition program in order to get increases that they're entitled to for the work they've been doing. So those are two things that strike me as ways of fixing the law, that they make it fairer in terms of not putting landlords in the situation of not being able to make money. money, or not being able to maintain their buildings, and being able to anticipate the changes in the, in utility rates, which this year, as we all know, were going to be rather exorbitant, thank you very much, state legislature, that wasn't paying attention six years ago when this was done. But that's reality, that's something all of us are going to face. So I don't know if there's anybody, and certainly don't count me among the people who are saying, "Don't change anything." I'm of the group that feels that we should make some tweaks and changes to law to make it operate better. And those are the two things that I think, that at least this point, I'm willing to put on the table for further discussion, maybe to get some staff analysis of how we could use this.
I generally agree with most of what Mark had to say, and would caution against the embrace of the market economy to determine the housing policy in Tacoma Park. This is a very harsh logic of the marketplace that if followed to its logical conclusion would, over time, probably lead to the depopulation in terms of lower-income people from this area to other places. And that would create the kind of social stratification that we've seen in other poor places in the country, New Orleans coming to mind, and other places. And then it becomes a major problem for society. So the extent to which we can modify or moderate market logic through sound public policy, through sensible and humane public policy, makes a lot of sense. I like the idea of an energy surcharge to help landlords, because I do think the landlords are strapped. That certainly seemed clear to me in the testimony that we heard last week and that we've heard on other occasions. And I don't think the 2.6% or whatever that number is, that they're allowed to raise their rents in the coming season is adequate to address some of the problems that they are undergoing. So I would certainly support the idea of an energy surcharge, however that could be worked out, to give landlords quick relief, not to wait for a year, especially given the likelihood of further increases in energy prices, no matter what the legislature in Maryland might be able to do to ameliorate the coming increases. I also like the idea of allowing the landlords to choose the most favorable base year in their calculations, that just seems sensible and seems fair. I would also go even a step further and suggest that the council consider using the property tax as a, as a means to give landlords some relief under some circumstances, especially if the properties in question are mainly at the service of lower-income people. Now, one could argue that maybe the property taxes paid now do not cover adequately the services that the city provides, but I do think that it's worth looking at the tax rate on some of these income properties, rental properties, and seeing if that might be a source of additional relief for them. So in some, and also, I do think that the, with respect to capital improvement, we have to make sure that it's used in a way that is particularly helpful to the smaller landlord, landlord that might own one small unit or a couple of small units, as opposed to those landlords with very large units in the city. The reason being is, is that the smaller landlords may find that the capital improvement process is a bewildering process for them, and to the extent the city can provide them assistance to walk them through and make it less onerous, then we have achieved a level of fairness that may not necessarily be adequately addressed under the present system. So those are just a few suggestions. The other, of course, is the importance of making sure that the current rental stock does not physically fall apart any further. In my area, I've noticed in particular, some of the fourplexes look pretty shabby, broken windows, trash thrown around. Some of this can be addressed through our current housing inspection and code enforcement process, but clearly, some of these landlords are, don't seem to be able to keep up their, the physical appearance of their properties the way they used to, and this creates an appearance in the neighborhood that no one really likes, especially the single home owners in the area. So I would hope that we can be mindful of that, and to the extent to which people spoke very movingly last week, in particular about infestations of insects, cockroaches, I hope that we took note of that and that the city will be able to conduct some inspections of those places and make sure that those tenants do not have to experience that kind of problem.
I think if we learned nothing else last week, it should be that rent control, as it's currently configured in the city, is not working for the landlords, and it's not working for the tenants either. I mean, that was the message that came across pretty clear to me, that the tenants are unhappy with the maintenance situations in their, in their building, and that's what I heard a lot of people talk about. I was also really impressed with the degree to which each side acknowledged the other's position, both, especially our smaller landlords, you know, our landlords that own one building with a few units, are very responsive to the tenant needs, as I hear them speaking. And the tenants, I think, are coming to understand a landlord situation as well. Mark, this is the second time that you have brought up this, the idea that affordable housing is a moral issue, and I agree with that. And to me, it begs the question of what the city as a whole is willing to put into affordable housing. Right now, the entirety of our affordable housing program really is about rent control. The cost of it is borne entirely by the landlords and our, our population as a whole, I think, other than the fact that we probably all pay a little bit more in taxes because we have slightly depressed real estate values on, on the rental properties, and we have some percentage of our staff that is dedicated to the rent control. Other than that, though, you know, we're not, we say that this is a priority, but we're not putting any of our other public dollars into building or maintaining affordable housing, either affordable housing stock or affordable housing subsidies for the long We don't have a program now that provides any kind of income-based assistance, which is, you know, one of the issues that we've talked about. You have the poster boy for the Southern Management folks, who's the doctor who's living in the rent-subsidized place. But the fact is, there are a lot of folks who are getting money transferred to them, basically. It's an income transfer from the landlords to the tenants, and in some cases, it's going to people who are making a very high percentage of the area median income. The other thing in terms of the morality and the fairness of this is that, really, this, our affordable housing program is for renters, and as a city, we don't do much in terms of affordable housing programs for people who want to purchase, either using some of our city's power for bonding initiatives or anything like that, to be able to provide some down payment assistance, or silent seconds, or other kinds of things, to help buy people into affordable housing. The way the rent control is structured, it doesn't offer a deep subsidy. So for people who are really low income in the area, that are making minimum wage, that are at 30% of the AMI, which is the area median income, you know, we don't have a program for them, and where's the morality of that? We also, we don't have a shallow subsidy for people who are maybe at 80% of AMI. That might actually be, to some extent, who benefits at the correct target level, if you will, given our current rent control program. So we have, we have a lot of instances, though, where we're not hitting the target. And the question of what is the target, well, the federal government uses the idea that you shouldn't pay more than 30% of your income for your housing costs. And when I talk about a target population, I say those people who are rent burdened or housing cost burdens. I was, I ran some of the maps off of the census.gov and was surprised to find that one of the areas with the highest housing cost burden is senior citizens living in Ward 1. And a group with the lowest housing cost burden is actually folks who live in the Ward 3 area, closest to New Hampshire and Eastern Avenue. I don't have an explanation for that, but maybe they've owned their homes longer, or something about the characteristic of those homeowners. And you have a high number of low-income families who are in Ward 5, in the area between Flower Avenue and the creek, and low-income seniors who seem to be clustered in Ward 5, in the area between Flower Avenue and, and University. And so we have different kinds of groups of people with different rent burdens, and I don't think that we, as a council, or, or, I don't know how the staff maybe understands, understands what those dynamics are and how they might play out, and what that might say for developing an affordable housing policy that is able to more specifically reach target populations. And the other thing, you know, I don't think we can ignore the fact that our current affordable housing program, which is rent control, is encouraging people to convert their units to condominiums. That is, that is real, encouraging people to get out of the rental housing business, discouraging any new investment in rental, in rental housing. I think it's telling that our new nonprofit partner in the New Hampshire Towers came and spoke against some aspects of rent control, who is about to be one of our biggest providers of affordable housing in our community, and they're a nonprofit. So there's a lot of folks that are, that have a lot to say, and I think we should, we should find some way to get more information, better information, so that we can have some more evidence-based decision-making. Because I think right now, a lot of it's about how people feel about things, there's these issues of morality and fairness, and, you know, our, what we're doing in relationship to the county, and how many other people, and who paid for the Maryland study, and I don't think that really matters. I think that if we look at something like property tax abatement, we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot for the very reason that you said, is, is that, you know, then we won't have as much money. And so one of the things I think we should look at tonight is the possibility of putting together yet another committee, and nobody shoot me. But I think it's hard for us, as a council up here, to debate this. Mark has his spiel that he says, and I have my spiel that I respond, and it kind of gets stuck in that. But it would be great to have a working group that could be, you know, nitty-gritty details kind of a, of a working group, to come up with some, some different solutions and ways of, of doing a better job of providing affordable housing for our community.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. First of all, I would, I would just say, I don't think this council's having difficulty discussing this. In fact, I haven't heard anybody call anybody a name yet or throw anything, so I think we're doing pretty well. You know, there's a lot of what you said, Colleen, that I have to really say that I don't agree with, but I also heard a lot of things that I find very intriguing, and a lot of suggestions that sound like interesting things to look at. And I don't think many of them, when you talk about assessing kind of what we, what we want to accomplish and looking at whether we accomplish that with rent control, I don't think that, that many of the things you suggested really had to do with doing away with rent control. I think it was more about process and how do we, how do we think a little bit beyond where we are today in affordable housing, such as how do we pay for it, how is it paid for today, and answering many of the questions, I think, that people have. So rather than start an argument, I would like to say that I, that I would support moving ahead with a, with a committee to look at affordable housing in Tacoma Park. But I think that that's somewhat scoped, it's well beyond the decisions that we need to make at this point in time.
I should say, I'd also support this idea of a committee. I think it is a longer-term approach to this discussion, and it would make sense to get the community engaged in helping us solve this affordable housing crisis.
I have to smile when I hear talk of an affordable housing committee. The first committee I was, the first involvement I ever had with city government was the, I think it was called the Affordable Housing Task Force at that point, and it was in the very early 90s. And we met for over a year and came up with a pretty voluminous report of recommendations that the committee came up with. And I can't remember whether the, whether staff gave us copies of that at some point in the not-too-distant past, in terms of background materials for discussion, but it might be worth bringing that report forward again, and if anybody can't find a copy, I know I've got mine. And let me just say that I think one of the things that we need to do in going forward with discussion on this is, there have been any number of people on any number of times when the University of Maryland study has been referred to, and what I'd like to do is have us put that on the agenda for discussion. If Mark is correct in his assessment, then that would make fairly quick work of a discussion of that. But I think the council needs to have that and revisit it and just look at it, and I don't want to be in the position of getting to the, toward the end of this process with people saying that we're ignoring an important study. So I think, I think we just need to put that on the table and deal with it, whatever that may entail. And I like the idea of the discussion that a number of people have said about the, dealing with the utilities and the hardship petition, and I think, to the extent that any of that gets over into the capital improvement petition, I think those are all areas where, if we're, if we're going to continue with our existing law, that we need to make those changes.
I would like to have staff move ahead with looking at making, making some of the changes we talked about. I guess I feel like if we're going to do the University of Maryland study, I trust the council will also read the EPI rebuttal of the basic works that went into underpinning the Maryland study, which I circulated to all council members a while ago, because they basically went after the numbers and the authors who were the basis of Maryland's, of Maryland's study. Because I think you need to understand all sides of the argument, rather than that. And you might as well also look at the Maryland study, which was done also, and that, the study was actually done at the council's request, as opposed to the landlord's request, which concluded that housing at Tacoma Park was better maintained than rental housing outside of Tacoma Park, and that landlords in Tacoma Park were no less likely to invest in their property than landlords outside of Tacoma Park. I mean, if we're going to include the studies, including the one we didn't ask for, that Southern Management paid for, we ought to include the one we actually asked the university to do, where they actually used the methodology that we had something to say about, and that they were doing something with the purpose that the city had in mind, as opposed to doing something for the purpose that Southern Management had in mind. I think they're two very different things. You know, the city doesn't, we, we talk a lot about not wanting to do everything Montgomery County does, and trying not to take on all the aspects of social services that the county does. And the housing programs, the ones that attach to incomes and provide subsidies, are things that are run by, at this point, Montgomery County. And Tacoma Park residents are eligible to take part in both Section 8 voucher programs and in the county's rent subsidy programs. And I would love to see the county spend more. I think it will be challenging for the council to figure out how to find more to do these things on our, on our own. I do think that all of us pay some cost to this community for, for having rent stabilization. But, you know, I hark back to Doug's point, which is that we all know what would happen if we don't have rent stabilization. There is no place for people to go. They certainly won't move to an affluent, you know, largely middle-class community like Tacoma Park, with one of the highest depreciating values and zip codes in Montgomery County. They'll, they'll wind up in neighborhoods where they can afford rents that are what they are in Tacoma Park or lower, and we should be blunt about it, they're neighborhoods that none of us would raise our children in, and they're with schools that none of us would want to send our kids to school in. I mean, I don't understand consigning people to that when we don't have to. I mean, I don't understand consigning people to that when we don't have to. It just doesn't seem like the right thing to do, and I won't use the word morality, but it seems wrong to me. We've, we've got the ability to do something better here, we've done something better here, we ought to be proud of what we've done, and we ought to be thinking about ways to make sure that it lasts and can be improved, and, and can go for another 20 years in terms of preserving people's affordability. That's certainly what I would like to see, to see us focusing on. I agree with, with Colleen on the points about other programs for the city to do. It would be really interesting to look at how do we encourage ownership, how do we get into the, the ability to provide soft seconds or down payment assistance to people who want to get in, into homes, there's limited programs. You know, what can the city do with bonding authority? Does it make sense for the city to set up a housing authority? Can we set up a housing authority in a way that doesn't, what's the word for it? Doesn't contract the, the faith and credit of the city, which I think would cause a great deal of concern to people. As I understand it, under state law, the establishment of a housing authority wouldn't do that, maybe that's something that we ought to be looking at. I think there are a lot more tools that we could look at, but, you know, we've always been limited in, in how much money we have to spend on these things. And I guess, you know, we, we can certainly have a discussion about where to get the money to, to spend on housing. I mean, I think Terry and I would probably be happy to, to join you in figuring out more ways of spending money to help people stay in affordable housing. But, you know, I, I guess my last comment will be, if we're going to have a committee, fine, I guess, but, you know, since half the residents of the city are tenants, I would expect half the members of the committee to be tenants, and since maybe one hundredth of one percent of the residents of the city are landlords, I'd expect to have some roughly similar proportion of representative of landlords on there. I'm not in favor of a committee that's one-third tenant, one-third homeowner, and one-third landowner. I mean, if it's going to reflect the community, it ought to reflect the people who live here. If it's going to be our values, it ought to be the values of the people who live in this community. So I would, you know, I think we can have a discussion about the shape of that committee, but it would be really important for me that tenants be roughly half of that committee.
Because I think as a parent from the discussion of the committee, this is a very, it's an issue people feel very intensely about. We've had discussions about this issue as long as I've been on the council, and I'm not sure that we're going to solve those issues with something like a committee. I don't object to it, but I think you would find putting together the committee almost as difficult as resolving the issue ourselves. The other thing is, well, I want to say a couple more things. One is that I agree with Colleen that it's important to know the effects of what we're doing, but again, I would say that I don't think it's fair to criticize rent stabilization without being able to compare it to something else. I've worked with a lot of anti-poverty programs over the course of my career, not necessarily housing programs, but I can tell you that they all have the same kinds of problems. They all have targeting problems. You always have people who are not your intended target who get benefits, you always have people who are eligible for benefits that aren't getting them, and you always have, and we don't with rent stabilization, but you always have with any subsidy program, you have very high administrative costs. If you try and target your benefits to people more accurately than just sort of making them generally available, you're going to run up your administrative costs, and in some of the programs that the federal government runs, they're as high as 10% or more of the total cost of the program. So, there are efficiencies or lack of efficiencies in those kinds of things also. There are costs to the city of running the rent stabilization program, but there absolutely nothing like the cost of running a subsidy program would be. The costs of administering subsidy programs are extremely high. The other point that I wanted to make was to join a number of people who have mentioned that while, I want to back up a step first. We, I think it's important that we continue with a program which provides affordable rents, but I would also like us to, to see us put more emphasis on affordable homeownership opportunities. We've done some work with this in the past, not as successfully as I think we would have liked to, because it's turned out to be a much more difficult problem than the problem of keeping rents down. I would like to see us do that. There's been some discussion of condo conversion. The gentleman who spoke at the citizen comment period asked why the, why members of the city would support limitations on condo conversions, since I'm one of those people. What I would say is that I think it's important that when we're talking about condo conversion, that we look not only at the needs of the property owners, but we look at the needs of the people who are living in the units. And one of the, one of the aspects of the law that we were looking at was a provision which would give the tenants the opportunity to vote on condo conversion, so the tenants would have some say about what happened to the, essentially to their homes. This, I think, would give the tenants a little bit of leverage to be able to get a good deal to buy their units. That's what's happened to it in the District of Columbia when this, where this provision actually exists. But I think there's a, there's a longer-term problem that even that piece of legislation doesn't address, and that is keeping the properties affordable, keeping the, the homeownership opportunities affordable over the long term. And you can make the, the units affordable to the first individuals who buy them without necessarily they're continuing to be affordable as they're sold and resold. So I think that's the, the hard, harder issue to deal with. To some extent, the move toward condominium conversion, which is happening not just in Tacoma Park, it's happening all across Montgomery County, and I understand in other places in the Washington area too, gives us an opportunity to, to try out some of these alternatives for creating alternatives to the current homeownership opportunities. I really worry when I look at the prices that homes are sold at in the city now. I bought my home 20 years ago, and I certainly couldn't afford the same house I'm living in, I couldn't afford to buy it today. And I'm sure that there are many people who are, who come from the groups that were moving into Tacoma Park when I moved in, teachers, people working for nonprofits, who probably can't get into a real estate market now. And I would love it if we could come up with affordable homeownership opportunities, even affordable for, you know, working-class and lower-middle income, income people, because I don't even think that we're doing that at this point. And so I think that the condominium conversion thing is worrying, but on the other hand, it may provide us with some opportunities that I would like to see us look at much more, in much more detail. The leg, the other purpose of the legislation is to try and slow down the pace of condominium conversion, so we can sort of keep on top of it and come up with some way of at least preserving some of those units as affordable homeownership opportunities for the longer term. So, I think those are two additional things that I would add to what other people have said.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. You know, we've, our discussion tonight has, has kind of broadened out from what I originally anticipated for this evening's discussion, and I, and I've talked about the broader issue, issue of a committee and, and kind of looking for longer-term impacts on this, on our affordable housing in the city. And I would like to see that on a, an upcoming agenda, the formation of such a committee. But for, actually, I, I would suggest that we need to look at closing the discussion on rent stabilization for this year, and looking at what specific tweaks, as people have called them, that, that may, we might want to make. And the one that struck me in the conversations that might be, that I would like to put on the table and might, might be appropriate, I'm completely against the, oh, escapes my mind right now, the, but allowing rents to go to market rate.
Vacancy.
Vacancy decontrol. I'm against the vacancy decontrol, but I think there is a compelling argument that allowing for some level of rent increase at the time of vacancy may make some sense if there is a way for us to include in our, our law that it's only to take place when it is a tenant vacating on their own will, rather than a, a no-cause eviction such as state law allows. So I would like to add that one on the table. And then I would just also like to address one thing that Mark mentioned earlier, and that is, the local governments, such as Tacoma Park, doing social programs, and I, I would just like to point out that we have a lot of residents of Tacoma Park who have extremely low incomes, and I think it is highly appropriate for local governments to be addressing the social needs of those neighbors, especially in this time when the federal government under the Bush administration is decreasing the amount of money that goes into social programs, and when the state government under Ehrlich is also decreasing the money to the social programs. I think it behooves us not only for the county, but also for the city, to be looking after our neighbors who are more vulnerable and less fortunate.
And so you'd support an increasing the tax rate to do that?
I would support increasing the tax rate. I would, I would support having voluntary programs within the city to address the needs of the residents. We have residents of the city of Tacoma Park who make, well, who have, whose income is fixed and well under $25,000 a year, who cannot afford to buy food, have to make choices between food and medication or, or legal childcare. I think that we as, as, what was the ethical, was that a moral? We have a responsibility to ourselves and to our community to reach out to those neighbors and to help them, whether it means increase in tax rate, or if it means setting up a voluntary program so that we can help them in whatever way we can.
I think Mark had us end up first.
And Terry, you reminded me of one other thing that we had talked about dealing with before. I'm, I'm not a big fan of vacancy decontrol, but there, there was the issue of the wide variance sometimes in buildings or rents within the same building for similar-sized units, and we had talked before about looking at a way of dealing with that. And that is one issue where I think that, that equal, that moving toward equalizing rents in the building would, would deal with the units that came under control or for some reason were kept at very, very low rents for a long time, and now they can't be brought up to at least the same level of the other units, other rents in the building. And that, from what I recall, would have a substantial impact, or at least a substantial benefit to a number of landlords in the city. And I would like to see, you know, staff look at revisiting that to figure out how to, how to tweak that thing and get it to pass whatever legal test that people were concerned about before, because the council had talked about doing that earlier.
Well, in the spirit of sticking to our rent stabilization. So, Mark, I did have my friend look at, at our rent stabilization ordinance, and I, his immediate response, I can't repeat on the air, but on page 191 of this lovely book of the Charter and Code of the City of Tacoma Park that I was given when I became a city councilperson, is what he felt might be the most egregious paragraph. And it is from the section, surprise, surprise, on rent increase petitions, and it is Section 8, and if you can make sense of this, I'll, I'll give you an award.
What's the award?
What would you like?
Depends how hard I think right now.
I'll buy you an ice cream at Summer Delights.
Okay.
All right.
Fair enough.
After the commission's adjustments to the landlord's original figures listed on the petition, the commission shall calculate the landlord's base year net operating income by subtracting all allowable expenses approved for the base year from the landlord's income during the base year.
Please click.
That's, that's good.
Please advise.
The commission shall then make an upward adjustment of the base year net operating income by 50% of the Consumer Price Index in order to calculate the allowable petition year net operating income. If the landlord's petition year documentation shows that the petition year net operating income is less than the adjusted base year net operating income, the commission shall allow rents to be adjusted upwards to result in a net operating income equal to the adjusted base year net operating income. Landlords who have paid no mortgage expenses from the base year to the petition year shall receive an upward adjustment of the base year net operating income by 100% of the Consumer Price Index.
Actually, you saw an illustration of that in the materials they gave us last week.
It doesn't make sense, though. Why somebody without a mortgage would get 100% increase in the net operating income while someone with a mortgage would only get a 50% increase? Because the person without the mortgage.
No, it's because it's an incre, because it's a percentage, not a number. If, if you're, if all of your, let me see if I can explain, I, I understand it.
You don't get any ice cream.
No, no. The issue is, no, the issue is if your, if your income is entirely non-mortgage expenses, okay, it's going to go up faster than it is if part of it's a mortgage. The mortgage part of it is going to be stable, it's going to be the same amount over a period of time.
Assuming the property doesn't change hands.
Well, well presumably, but people, when they're doing a hardship petition, they generally use their own figures, they don't go back and, they don't even have access to somebody else's figures. So usually they're comparing their own, a, a previous year of their own to their current year.
That's not clear in the.
Well, I mean, as a practical matter, that, I mean, maybe you, maybe your previous owner is kind enough to give you all their financial figures, but I don't think that usually happens. So people are usually, are usually comparing their own figures to their own figures. And if, and the part of it that is financing costs usually stays the same. So if your financing costs are part of the total, it's going to go up more slowly than if financing costs are not part of the total, in which case it'll go up more quickly, the total will. Is that?
I understand the logic, but I would say that the.
Language is convoluted.
Huh?
Language is convoluted.
Yeah, that, that documentation, that, that doesn't flow through what's written in, but the ordinance.
There was an example, there was an example of it in the packet that we had last week of, of how you would do that calculation, and you could sort of walk, walk it through the steps, and you can see how it actually works. It is hard to explain, but when you look at the stuff that we got last week, you can sort of see how it works through the steps.
How about the answer to the other question, which was, are, are the letters equal, or is the first letter more equal? You guys don't understand. There's all these, there, there are a series of letters to talk about hardship petitions and the conditions, or the, and how the landlord may calculate his base.
Yeah.
Is her, her base. And one provision requires them to use 90 base unless they get called as permission, but then all the other clauses, clauses say, at the option, at the option, at the option. And because they're all letters under the same number, I had assumed they were equal, which is what the council had intended, but it appears that they may not be equal.
Well, can, can we.
Right. And the, and the other thing that he said was that there was no, there's a, there's a trigger, a causal trigger for the, for the commission? He said there's no definition of what that might be.
Right. So, let's fix that.
That, that's something that we can talk about, that I think this is maybe beyond a level of detail that we can deal with at 10 o'clock this evening.
But it is important, these are the things that need to be fixed.
Yes, no, I, I.
And I would hope that we can fix these things quickly.
I think we've directed the staff, and I don't think we actually need to decide which paragraph it is that we're talking about. I mean, I think as, as long as it's, as long as it's understood, I think we can, we can go ahead and fix it. I think what Mark, is that clear or not? Mark's saying that the landlord can use either 90 or another year, and the question is, how can they, what's, what's the basis on which they can make the choice? Is there a, do they have to give a reason, or is it just at their option?
It's supposed to be, they were supposed to be allowed to pick.
It is at their option.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so why is everybody saying I can't document 1990's base year, and that, then I'm, they're stuck on that?
Well, then maybe we need to clarify the law, maybe that's what we need to do, is to make, make it clear that they can use 90 or another year. Are we, is the council finished with this discussion? Is there anything else we need to say on this?
When does it come back?
I'm not seeing anything else. And so, are you all, have you all got sufficient information? Is this going to be helpful?
Do you have your direction?
Do you have your direction?
When does it come back to us?
Well, I just want to see if, if, no?
Two weeks.
Okay, well, the, the, the schedule that we're working on is two weeks from this evening. The staff will come back to us with their recommendations for revisions to the ordinance. And then the week following that, there'll be a council discussion of the staff recommendations, and essentially what we want to do with them. So two weeks from now will basically be a presentation and a discussion, which I assume will sort of focus on, you know, our understanding of the recommendations, and then what we would like to do with the recommendations would be the following week. Colleen?
And then what about a committee for affordable housing?
I think we can talk about that at the same time that we have this discussion of the, of the staff recommendations.
And do people want to, do you?
And do people want to deal with University of Maryland and other studies and any other information that we have, so that we've done our comprehensive review, or do people feel like we don't need to go there?
What does the council want to do?
I would be willing to do that, but only if we have a balanced discussion, which includes information beyond just what's in that report, but also if there were other reports or other information about that report that balanced the discussion.
But if I can just suggest that we don't want to say, well, we'll have the discussion, but only if there's balanced stuff, and somebody says, well, there isn't another one that balances it, and therefore we don't have the discussion. I would be comfortable certainly having multiple reports, and on the other hand, if it was just to deal with the University of Maryland report, and people feel like that can be dealt with, with the information that those of us who have done more work on this might have, that would deal with, if it were perceived to be an unbalanced report, that's okay. We can deal with it without having the other balancing piece. We can just deal with the one and say, you know, either this is good, or it's...
Can I suggest that if the council wishes to go forward with that discussion, that anyone on the council can put information into the packet for us to look at at the same time? Would that be...
It's a call, but then we can...
Okay. And let me ask one final question to the council in terms of timing. Do you want to deal with the University of Maryland report before we talk about the staff presentations? Because if we do that, we'll probably have to change the date of some of that, of some of that discussion.
I want to fix the stuff we said we were going to fix. I would like to do that.
All right, okay.
Because the University of Maryland report is just an attack on rent control. You're not going to get any insights, other than, do you want to get rent control?
Okay, all right. So we'll keep, we'll keep on this thing, and I'll see if I can squeeze it in here somewhere.
I think we should do it, I think we should do it before we have the discussion. You know, the methodology is in the report. You can look at the methodology and objectivity, and I have to tell you that, you know, I review these kinds of reports all the time, and the first thing I do is look at the methodology and objectivity. And, you know, people will make decisions based on that about what they find are the valid points out of the study. And we can pull forward the 2000 study as well, and when that comes up, I will point out that the economics have changed since that time.
Did you have a thought on the timing?
I have a concern. One of the things that we've been trying to emphasize throughout this whole discussion is that we look at the ordinance in its entirety. And if I understood what Councilmember Elrich was talking about was fixing basically two pieces of the, of the ordinance, essentially the capital improvement section and the hardship rent increase petition.
I think we mentioned some other things, too.
Yeah, there was a number of things that people brought up.
And utilities, excuse me.
The unequal spread of rents on vacancy, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, there were a number of suggestions that were made.
What I'd like to do from the step list is take those positions that have been voiced by the various members, and then we have them all written down, but package them as a whole, so there may be other things that staff will include within the listing of recommendations. I guess I'm a little confused in terms of the timing, and if I missed it, I apologize, but you'd like the presentation about the University of Maryland's discussion on the impact of the rent stabilization ordinance, after you go through and you look at staff recommendations, or before?
Well, I don't think we're looking at anything as elaborate as a big presentation. I think we were, the council wanted, members of the council wanted to read and discuss the University of Maryland report, along with some other pieces of material that are related to it.
There was, there was also a report that Councilmember Elrich had said that he had distributed and rebutted to the University of Maryland. If we could get a copy of that, that would be very nice.
I emailed it to a bunch of people, I'll email it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't... So as far as the University of Maryland's presentation, you don't, or report, you don't necessarily want the University of Maryland to be here?
I think we can take a look at it on our own.
Okay.
Would it be helpful to have them here?
Probably.
My concern is...
Yeah, I don't know if you can get it here.
Based on the conversation that you, frankly, you've sort of dismissed it already, that it might be hard to get them to come to present a report that, I mean, we can call them and ask them if you're interested in having them come.
I would suggest that the University of Maryland report is interesting information, along with whatever other reports there may be, but that that really strikes to the broader issue, and would be a more appropriate thing for the, to be a part of that whole committee discussion. I think for this year's rent control or rent stabilization discussion, that focusing on those tweaks...
I like that word.
That have been discussed, that we, that we focus on those in the short term, since we do have the budget hearings coming up in the very near term. But I heard you say something that staff had some additional tweaks that you haven't mentioned to us, is that?
No, well, we have not made our recommendations to the council, but when we go through and do that, we'll be addressing everything from the annual rent increase allowance through to the hardship and the other capital improvement, or the other rent increase petition process, looking at utility or other surcharges, possible exemptions, kind of the whole gamut of all the different things that we've been talking about over the last six months, or two years, actually.
That word sounds much better, recommendations. So we have our recommendations of things that we would like to do, and you're going to, at the same time, be presenting some staff recommendations for us to consider.
Correct. The, one of the intents of our discussion this evening was to identify what your purpose was in terms of the rent stabilization ordinance. And basically, it's to preserve, as I understand it, to preserve the affordable, to preserve the housing units now in their affordable condition, but then also somehow to target it towards low and moderate or very low.
And then I would just like to reiterate that I think the University of Maryland study and other studies like that strike more to the question of rent stabilization as a broader issue, and affordable housing issues as a broader issue than to individual changes, small changes to the current program. So I would suggest that we take care of what we started working on first, and then look at those reports as part of the committee process. Thank you.
I would, I would just note that what we've been talking about this evening isn't that different from what the purpose that was adopted in 1992, which was to ensure a safe, sanitary, and suitable living environment, to maintain a stable, ethnically diverse, and economically heterogeneous community, to preserve the quality of affordable housing, and to provide for the resolution, minimization, and prevention of landlord-tenant disputes. I mean, what we've been talking about isn't that much different than the purpose that we adopted in 92.
I'd just like to say that I could see that Terry's suggestion about the University of Maryland report could be construed as just coming up with another way to not discuss it again. My point in pushing for the discussion is to have the discussion, rather than extend to, what, a third year, where it's, it almost got presented, it was, it was on the agenda, it was scheduled, the University of Maryland folks were going to come, and for the people who want us to discuss that, I don't want to have to say, well, it's been put off again. I just want to deal with it. And I don't think it's going to take that long.
Oh, yes, well, Mark?
Because Colin and I are going to have lots of things to say about it. I mean, I, well, I mean, look, this is what I say, look, all of us...
I'll promise not to talk, if it'll help.
Pardon me?
I said, I'll promise not to talk during their whole presentation, if it'll help.
That's not going to happen, and I'm not going to stop either. Look, you know, we all read the report, and it wasn't enough to convince us to change the law. I mean, I'm with Terry to some, to some extent. But I, you know, if we're going to have, let's have the discussion, but let's have it after we fix it, because I thought we had a bunch of people in here over the past couple of months saying, there's some things you need to fix, and if you don't fix them, we're going to have even bigger problems. The PEPCO increase goes into effect in the relatively near future. Let's deal with the things we said we're going to fix. If that report was going to change our minds, we would have changed our minds, we would have been having a different discussion and abolishing rent control. And that's, that's not where I see this council going. So we can, hopefully, you're right, Bruce, we'll have a short, tortured report, and we'll discuss it, and it'll be fine. But I really do want to move on, move on with the other issues before us. I will say, the one thing different about this report is, it's not a report we asked for, it's not a report we commissioned, it's a report that a body that wants to get rid of rent control asked the university to do for us, not for us, to do for them. So I don't feel any obligation, frankly, to give this report the courtesy of council time, because it's not a report this council asked for. But because some people feel they want to discuss it, let's discuss it. But I sure hope that every time somebody decides they want to have a study and announce to us that they've discovered that, you know, based on their study, everything we do is wrong, and the sun is on, you know, we're actually, and the sun is revolving around this, that we don't decide that, well, if somebody's done a study for us, thank you very much, and we're going to take time to discuss their study. This is, this is unlike any other report that we have ever discussed. And it just bothers me that because, you know, Southern Management pays for a report, that any of us feel obligated to do it. I mean, they just write it off as their advertising.
I just feel like we protest too much. Let's just deal with it.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, if we want to make it shorter, maybe we don't ask the University of Maryland for presentation, that we are capable of reading the report on our own.
I'll agree.
Huh?
I heard you saying you wanted to send it to the committee, and it's like, oh, there it goes again.
I said, I'll agree.
Okay, all right. So we, I will put that on the agenda as soon as I can. It doesn't necessarily have to fit within the existing schedule, which is two weeks for the staff's recommendations, and then the following week for us to discuss the staff's recommendations.
As long as it's not six months.
And, and we should note that the staff's recommendations will be conceptual, not legislative language. They would like to get our discussion of the concepts before they spend the money and the time putting it into specific legislative language. So there will be, there will also be coming back to us probably after the budget in July, the exact legislative language that this, that these concepts would be translated into.
I mean, I'm really serious about the PEPCO thing. I mean, if we're serious about doing something, and PEPCO's announced that utility rates go up in July, or whatever it is, then shouldn't we be, like, dealing with some of this stuff earlier? Because people are just going to say that we had this, you heard this, you know this was coming, and now it's July, and you guys are getting around to do this. Are you serious? I mean, it seems like the one thing we could do is deal with the known problem, and if, you know, if staff has some suggestions, or councilmembers have some suggestions, we've got to deal with it.
Well, maybe one of the things that the staff can do is advise us on whether they think that's separable or not. I mean, the other thing that we could do, if we discussed this in July, was to make it retroactive to the beginning of the month.
But, no, I just worry that, you know, if we start in July and it drags on, if this could take more than one...
I hope, I hope it doesn't drag you.
Then you're going to be hitting people with retroactive increases, which makes it even harder for people to plan and pay.
Yes, I understand that.
I think we must address the increase in utilities and the adverse effect that's having on landlords, and I would second the idea that we direct the staff to come up with some recommendations of how we could calculate this in a way that's fair and reasonable.
You think not? You don't think you can separate it out?
Why not just do all the recommendations first?
I'm sure we can do that, but I cannot do that by April 17th. I'm gone all next week.
Oh, no, not by April 17th.
You can't by...
That's too soon.
Yes, I guess by April 17th, what, what we are looking for is a conceptual idea on how we would deal with it.
Yes, that's not...
And then the notion is, if that conceptual, if that concept can be moved faster than the other concepts that we're talking about, whether you could give us the legislative language shortly after the decision on what to go forward with, and whether that could go forward in advance of the rest of it.
Let me slip on it, but we'll try.
Okay, so, and I'm not asking for an answer this evening, it's, when you present to us on the 17th, could you also give us the answer to that?
We'll try.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we have exhausted that subject for the time being, so if there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Tortured to death.